Good morning. I'll call the commission meeting to order. Matt's secretary, please call the row.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
President.
Eastern Commissioner Bradley Jackson.
President.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris.
President, if you all join me with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. All righty. Thursday, June 5th. We've got approval of today's agenda. We have approval of meeting minutes. We do have two meeting minutes. This mat is completed regular session, May the 22nd and May the 29th. Two regular sessions. We also have one financial that Ms. Melissa, Treasurer, has submitted to us. It's a certified court order, 06-05, 2025-01. It's an April term financial order that you all had in your file today. Other items of consideration will stay in the order that we have them listed. And then at the end of that meeting, we will have a zoning meeting at 10:00 AM or close to 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM or after. And then we have two closed session topics. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda statement.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Sag it.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All righty. Okay. So the first thing on the agenda today is Purchasing Manager Ms. Kim and also...
She had every intention to be here, but I'm sure she was caught up in the sun.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, Ms. Bryant's not here, so missing her.
Yeah, I just talked to her this morning and she had planned to be here, so she just been busy lately. So this is from ITB 2023-A, screen services. This is a second contract renewal, year three. They did change the prices. I know that Director Bryant's very happy with the service that she has, and so I just asked him to approve the contract renewal for another year.
All right. Very good. Any comment or questions? Okay. Need a motion to approve the renewal of the direct screening service.
I'll make the motion to approve the ITB 2023-A, play screen.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
If it passes, thank you very much. The next topic is Highway Administrator Ms. Needles. And this is, I think, gonna be important. This is the update on damage from the main storms. Appreciate all the pictures that you've given us and things like that.
Absolutely. Good morning. So in the background, we're gonna be playing a PowerPoint of those same pictures that you have in front of you. I'm not gonna talk about each one. You'll see a lot of the same similar damage, but that is...
You'll be here all day to talk about each one?
Yeah, but it will be part of the meeting, so that's the PowerPoint up there. So also you have copies of those same photos, but then also our project summary based on location. This is complete for the most part. We do still have some work entries that we are reviewing as far as putting barricades up, making sure everybody has the right equipment in there. But yesterday, we hit $100,000 that we spent so far towards this cleanup. So the first day that we started was May 24th, which was that Saturday. Closing roads, roads kept closing through that Sunday. By Monday, first on the west side, things started receding. We were able to start making some repairs as far as going through and touching every road and making sure that people could get in and out. And now we're to the point where we're coming back to try to make more permanent repairs. There were 47 total locations that we had to close at some point between Saturday and Monday. There's one that is still not open, which is Wilson Road, the low water crossing there. But to be fair, that's closed almost half the year anyway, and it was closed before the storm event. So it is typically always covered with water, and then any rain we get, there's just too much to cross it. So essentially, every road that we have damage on is now back open. Some of the biggest damage we saw on the west side was both East and West Riverdale, and then Seneca Road as you approach Hawkins Bridge. There was just a lot of material across the roadway that we had to clean up there. On the east side, there was a lot more damage than on the west side. The Findlay was one of the first to kind of start overtopping the branches of the Findlay. We had some severe damage on North Marshfield, Stewart Creek. Some of the crossings just had some minor damage, like some of the asphalt on the approaches got popped up, but those are still listed on here for us for repairs. Down by Swamp Creek took some pretty good hits. We had some trees down. We had to call in for help for one of the trees across this slab on Swamp Cave because it was too big for our equipment. But again, we've got all but one open. We don't expect any damage on Wilson. It's just the water's too high. So for the next few weeks, we will continue to make some more permanent asphalt repairs and some armoring repairs. And we anticipate the total project cost to be $200,000 to $215,000 just for the Christian County Highway Department. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
So just thinking back on our budget from last year, how did we budget like these type of things?
So you don't.
And so is that gonna come out of money that we were gonna try to make our own improvements? Or where's that gonna come out of, that quarter million dollars?
I requested an agenda item for next week to be able to use the emergency funds to pay for about $120,000 of our 200 total. So the 200, within that 200 total, is what we would report to FEMA, but that includes our labor and equipment. So that's something we self-absorbed as our department. But if we were reporting to FEMA, we could reclaim those funds. So I'll be asking for your approval to use 101 to buy material, so to buy rock and to buy asphalt. And then that way, we would not have to remove any roads from our summer paving list.
Do you think, do you think that... I haven't been able to talk to Mr. Amthauer over emergency management to see what kind of totals been turned in. I mean, I know there's damage to other businesses and stuff like that. If we could get, what is it, $6 million?
So there's a county threshold, and then there's a state threshold. So the county thresholds, I really should look this up because you might be the third person that's asked me, and I can't remember. It's either $240,000 or $260,000. The county has to meet by itself. Now, that's the county, cities, specials, everybody. But then the state as a whole has to hit $6 million. And Phil wasn't sure if we could meet it, the state as a whole, because he wasn't sure if our surrounding counties had the kind of damage that we had. So I think he's still looking into that.
Yeah, because that will be important. I have a feeling, just Findlay Farms itself, they sustained damage too. And so...
Yeah, I know Ozark Special has an issue with the bridge.
Ozark Special did. The Chinese restaurant did. There's different places. There's some other homes and things like that. So we need to really track that number and try to get some either state or federal help.
I gave him our updated number this morning, so I hope, fingers crossed, that it doesn't qualify.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've got, luckily, no, none of our elevated bridge structures were damaged beyond repair or anything like that, but we do have a lot of widespread spot damage just from where creeks and rivers came up and really hurt things.
That stormwater project list we have with ARPA money, was any of the, I know we haven't done them all yet. We're in the process, but was there any of those that would have helped us, helped the county maybe alleviate some of that?
Two that I can think of right off the bat. So our low water crossing improvements on Fern resulted in hardly any damage at all. That was constructed and done, so that worked great. And then we're 99% done for the improvements on Rochester. And we've got some photos, they'll be in your packet. But the water came up, and you can see to the right on that picture where the water is in that new channel that we built, where it would normally be across all the road and all the property. And when it went down, there was only a little bit of like shotrock that got misplaced. So I counted that as a victory. Those box culverts worked great, and there wasn't nearly the property damage they usually have. So I think they're working great.
So let me ask you...
My phone did not ring on that project, and normally my phone rings from that road.
Yeah.
So that was, I think, the residents' experience.
Something different.
Something different, yes. Something new. So that was a good thing. Absolutely.
100%.
Well, as you showed, we did make some good decisions on some of the stormwater project areas. So another question I've had is by citizens. We can't be everywhere, and you said we have 47 roads damaged. I assume almost all of those were because of low water areas.
Well, 47 just closed.
Closed.
We've got almost double that in damage.
In damage, so way more than that in damage. And so how do we go around closing roads? Is, I mean, we're just driving around, and it may not be right then water going over. And as soon as we leave, I can assume that five minutes after we leave, all of a sudden the water has crested and it's over the road. I mean...
We have our, so we have a list of the typical closures that we have during high water.
You know the history.
We know the history, and we constantly check those. We also check the USGS site and the water gauges, so we can tell, like, for example, that Saturday, the 24th, the majority of the rain happened in the northeast part of the county or up by Marshfield. And so that drains into the Findlay and it comes to us. So if we see a gauge start rising there, we know to get ready down here. Some other things are just phone calls. Like, we had some roads that...
Citizens. You need citizens to help.
...experienced damage that don't typically. And so while we're checking our usuals or things we think are gonna happen, if we get that phone call, that's really helpful, because then we know to go out there. And then sometimes you just have some strange reactions and things, like Holder, for example, that has the creek that runs into the James there, and that flows, and it flows up over the road, and it can be dangerous. But then the James will start rising and backing up. And so then that would create a completely different scenario where the creek's not flowing anymore, and then you have kind of a lake there. There's other places like that that happen around the Findlay more in the northeast part of the county, like Arapahoe Road and Ballard and things like that. But yeah, we have our usuals, we check them, we watch the gauges. We have everybody running roads to see what's going on. And then, of course, the public letting us know is super helpful as well.
Yeah, so I mean, we're live on YouTube, and I just want to point out that it really is important for the public, all citizens, to alert us anytime they see a tree across the road, when they see water over the road, be sure and let us know. It's not a perfect science, but obviously, public safety is the most important thing that we do with the roads and flooding and everything like that, so...
And there's a good group. We get a lot of calls. They're usually through dispatch, but we're residents, and we get those, so...
All right. Well, I would tell you, I think you all did another great job, and I appreciate it. It's not fun to be out there when it's raining and flooding and stuff like that.
No, I, all, I just, all thanks to the guys, because, like I said, from Saturday, Saturday to Monday, there were 47 different road closures. By Tuesday morning, we only had four remaining. So all that work they did Sunday evening, Monday, and then early Tuesday to knock nearly 40 roads off that close list was pretty incredible.
Is that one of the worst floodings that we've had?
No.
They're still worse.
Yeah, like 2015, 2017, where we had a FEMA declared, some FEMA declared issues. We had some actual bridge, completely taken out, bridge approaches and stuff like that. So I consider that was a little, a little worse. But this wasn't, wasn't great.
No.
Wasn't, wasn't fun.
Didn't feel good.
No.
I know saying about 100-year flood, I think the time is narrowing.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good report. Appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda, we've got Director White behind again. Legend Amendment, and Ms. Amy, our auditor.
So we're in a bit of a pickle, in case you didn't know. So we'll start on May 22nd. The commission approved change order, or GHN change order number one dated May 16th for $37,031, and Emery Sapperson's change order number six. And according to that document, it has an effective date of May 9th for $67,692.36. Now, according to RSMO 50.660, no contract imposing a financial obligation on the county is binding unless it meets four criteria. One, it has to be in writing. There has to be a sufficient amount remaining in the appropriation, which is the budget. There's a sufficient balance in the funds to make the payment. And the contract bears the certification of the accounting officer, and in our county, that's the auditor, that items two and three have been verified. You got one of the four. So what are the consequences of the failure to meet all four of these criteria? You can find that in RSMO 50.650, paraphrased. Unless the accounting officer certifies the purchase first, the officer making the purchase is liable personally and on his bond. Now, I don't believe the commissioners have to be bonded, so that means that this commission is right now on the hook personally for $104,723.36 under the change orders that were approved and signed. Any invoices that my office receives under these purchases is not payable by the taxpayer, only the personal funds of the commissioners. So if you're ready to get your checkbooks out, I'll stop talking and walk away now. If you're not, we're gonna take some action. So since they're not legally binding on the county, my office can't approve any payments to be made under them, because the effective date is prior to funds being available in the appropriation. We can't retroactively certify some payment. The first step, the commissioners left to vote to void the change orders and alert the vendors that the change orders have been canceled. And then if you agree, the budget for this fund will have to be amended. And we only can do this because we received additional unanticipated revenue into this fund that can now be reallocated into the appropriation. The amendment process requires the proposed amendment to be made available to the public for 10 days. It will lay on this table for that time, and I can make the changes to our transparency portal so that it will be available on there. After 10 days, the commission may vote to amend the budget for this fund or not. If the amendment is approved, only then can the project manager approach the vendors about revising and reissuing the change orders, which will need to be approved by the commission again. So I watched that meeting, and not one person asked about the budget before approving these.
I want to make some comments, but you all have comments, questions?
I have some, but go ahead.
So I'll start out by saying, and I don't want to, I'm not gonna be, I don't want to be negative, okay? But I would say that in my, in my time here, I certainly have learned myself that any time that, that we need to buy something, I want to buy something for the commission, because I'm just in charge of the commission, that we go to you, and I get it okay. Sometimes I have to wait a year because I didn't have it on the budget the year before. You've taught me some things, so, okay? And I appreciate it. I'm okay with it. I don't like it sometimes, but I understand. I understand the assumption I made, and I'm sure that the other commissioners made it too, is the fact that I would think that everybody that's asking for money to be spent for this county would have already cleared that with you. Wrong assumption, but I thought it would be. And I'm not, want to be negative toward Mr. Todd or anybody else.
It was another thing.
I just thought we know what our process is, just as you okayed a PA system that we badly need, and, and we found, you found the money for it out of two different funds. And when you explain all that stuff, it's pretty, pretty sensible, okay? So we, so I'm understanding all that. I'm just not exactly sure why and how we do the change order. Now, what I was thinking to myself was, without figuring out how you put money in different places and different little pockets, we've sold two lots. We've got almost a million dollars on those two lots. And, and so I, I know that the county has money, because we're paying as we go with this 40-acre campus. I know we've got money. I don't know where it's at.
It was already tied up in contracts.
Tied up for, what was it tied up for?
Contracts for constructing that building.
Everything was already spoken for?
Yep.
Okay.
I thought we were like, we had over a million dollars in that fund that was sitting, which is explaining, is that correct?
I was at the same mindset, I think, as you all were. And we're wrong.
Yeah, the fund balance was sufficient, but the budget was not, because the total budget for this year, there's a stat right here, was $3.1 million to be spent on that property, or out of that fund this year. That's with $2,500 in interest, $1 million from the sales of the lots, and then $3 million transfer from general revenue. Because we got more than $1 million for the lots, that we get to count as the unanticipated revenue that allows us to legally do a budget amendment.
Is there not, and I'm new to this circle, is there not? Is there not stuff in place for proper procedure before we even hear something in that? Because there are assumptions made, and there are things that, when, when we're looking at a budget like this, like I said, in the mindset of saying, hey, there's a million dollars, we know there's a million dollars there, we're talking about 60 grand. Is there not anything in place that prevents this from even coming to us if you're on vacation or you're out of town or you're not working, before it comes? Because there's a lot of different departments that can come and ask for things and outside of just saying, hey, and if you're not here, and they're here, and they go, I talked to you. I mean, what's the difference in them approving that or not? Is there not, is there not some kind of procedure in place to prevent this from, from happening in the future? Because if not, then that's what we need to create, because there's no reason to have, have a meeting to go, well, this person didn't talk to that person, because there are assumptions made that that is the protocol. So what do we need to put in place to prevent this from happening in the future?
Previously, when anybody would come to the commission with money, the first question was, what's your budget look like? And that hasn't, that wasn't asked that day.
And just, Ms. Amy, so one of the things, and I've always appreciated when you come to commission meeting, but you were gone, out of town, so you can't come.
Yeah, the first time I leave the state in more than a weekend in three years.
I know, and I'm glad you got to go.
That's right.
But here's, here's the deal. I just want you to know.
Ever since I was a cell phone member, I guess someone rings my cell phone.
I just want you to know that this commission, since I've been here, I've, I've asked you, and I know other people have asked you, other commissioners have asked you, when somebody comes up here, we, we look to you. Ms. Amy, do we have the money? You're the money person. You're the person that knows. And we knew we had sold lots, we knew we had money, but we weren't even thinking about what that budget said. And so even though we had very short notice, because we didn't even have that, that information until the morning of the meeting, we had very short notice of what was going on. However, you know, not blaming you, because it's certainly not your fault, but if you had been there, I guarantee you, one of us, I know I would have said, Ms. Amy, do we have the money? Because that's the question. Do we have the money that we can spend legally for that matter?
But where I go back to in fixing this moving forward, we can't fix what happened in the past, right? We're looking at it and saying, hey, we made some mistakes here, there was assumptions made. Okay, we can't fix that. Right now, we're gonna, we're gonna be fixing it through the amendment. The thing is, we need to make a procedural thing that, hey, this is how this works, or we don't even hear it moving forward. So my question is, how do we do that in order to, because if we get into a meeting and we don't catch it, or we're not like, hey, that, we're gonna be right back in the same boat, and I don't want to have that happen. So what can we do to create, or what can we create to make sure that that's, that's part of the procedure before it even comes to us?
Just off the top of my head, before you vote on anything, if it's a contract, make sure the auditor certification is on it before you see it.
Can we make a sheet or process where somebody would have to fill that out with you approving and you signing before that even comes to us, so they know part of that procedure before I go to commission? I'm gonna have to go to the auditor and get that to make sure it's inside my budget, and you sign off on it saying, it is in the budget? I mean, is that, I just don't want to be down this road again.
So let me jump in on that, because I'll assume some responsibility, because that, that document was handed to me right before the meeting started, and my gut reaction was to kick it to the next meeting, because I don't like being surprised with things. But I went ahead, and I was somewhat familiar with the information that was on, and after skimming it, it looked like what I already knew. I think we must, it's imperative, and I've said this for, for two years now, of refining our processes, and we're, we're taking steps, and they're slow, in which we need to set an agenda. There needs to be a meeting with whoever, whoever's in charge, right? So my, my experience, I draw from the city of Ozark, where as the chief elected official, it was my agenda. Well, it's his agenda, as, as the chief elected official overseeing the county commission. That meeting needs to take place in which any interested party has submitted all of their documentation appropriately inside a timeframe that it can be reviewed. The clerk is involved in this, or the designee from the clerk's office. Our county attorney, which has been an on-call basis for 20 some odd years, but here in a couple of weeks, it will be in-house counsel, which will help shore up some of that process, that when we have an agenda meeting, the in-house counsel is there. If we have anything budgetary, it definitely should have your stamp of approval on it that it's been reviewed and it's appropriate, so that when it gets to us, we're not making assumptions, because you know what they say about assumptions? And apparently, we have made that same statement 100% accurate. And I apologize. My gut reaction was to not even take it up, but I did, because I do not like having stuff handed to me before a meeting starts. I want that days in advance. I want the public to be able to see it days in advance, and we're working towards that process. Unfortunately, we're not working fast enough to get it in place to protect all of us. Not just us being on the hook potentially, but protect our citizens from something slipping through the cracks. And it was bad timing for you to leave, and shame on you for leaving for three days, you know, in the past three years. I'm just, I'm just, you know, just joking, because it's not your fault. I mean, you're only as good as the information you have the access to. And if, if the information doesn't reach your desk, how are you to know? So it falls back, you know, back on us. We made assumptions that everything had run through the proper channels. It didn't. How do we fix it? We fix it through the agenda process. I know there was a discussion here recently about, well, we had, we had established Friday as a cutoff date, now we've moved it to Monday. We shouldn't shorten the window, because we need to make sure that clerk's office gets all the information in a timely fashion to be able to put it out for us and the public. It's gone through all the back channels, that it's, it's, it's met the auditor's approval for a budget amendment, it's met whoever's supervisor's approval, you know? We just need to know. The attorney needs time to review it and write off, you know, sign off on it, all those pieces, parts. That's how we fix this in the future. We just need to keep working towards that.
It just needs to be, we need to jump on it. We need to do it.
We just need to.
Because right now, we're in the process, and I'm just learning, that the process is we get things and things happen, and then we talk about it, and then it kind of falls to the wayside, and then however time it happens, and then we're doing it. So we just need to get something in place to prevent things like that from going. So whatever it is that we need to do, we need to be, we need to be working on to get it done, so that we're not, we're not discussing this again. it done, so that we're not discussing this again, and how much ever time, because it's just something slipped through the cracks.
Yeah, and I think all of us, knowing the project, knowing that we have just sold the lots.
Right.
You know, but not thinking of the proper procedures.
And the contracts that had already been executed that tied up all that money anyway.
Kim, do you have a question?
Yeah, Ms. Kim?
So, in my previous worlds, we've had change order forms. We don't have a lot of large change orders here, but the campus has given us some large change orders. But typically, and I can do this very quickly, is to create a form that starts out with how much the purchase order started with, what the change order is, or whatever change orders we've had onto that, because we'll have several change orders on this. What that description is, and then have whomever you feel needs to be signing. But typically, it would be the department head that's requesting it, the auditor showing that we have the budget, and then, you know, after I've reviewed it, I've signed it, and then we would present it together. All change orders go through my office. And this particular one stopped when I went back to Amy and said, where's the money coming from?
I agree.
So that's where, I just want to make sure that, in my opinion, when you have change orders, and they're from purchase orders, and they're from contracts, it all should throw, again, I feel like this should all come through purchasing, whatever those change orders are. And in that way, I can verify if Amy has received it, the auditor's received it.
Checks and balances, it sounds good.
It gives a bit of redundancy to the system as well, because now, if Amy takes another three days off in the next three years, much deserved, and we appreciate, I'm just making amity to that. But you deserve your time off, every employee deserves their time off. But now, it's, we don't skip the auditor's office, you know, because she happens to be out, it's caught here, and then that communication piece can still happen, it's just, it's.
So you're okay with making that form?
Yes, and then, just to make sure, then my office and whoever's department is would come and present that to you at that point, after all the signatures are done.
Sounds very good. So we need to get, we need to create the form, then we need to get that information out to everybody through email, explaining the process so everyone understands. And I think not only getting that email out, but then having something for each department head to sign, acknowledging they've read that and understand the process, so we don't end up with this again. You good with that, Amber?
I have a, I have a, I don't want to, I'm not trying to circumvent anything, you're not, I think for the most part, you're the first person I contact when I have a, I copy everyone. But still, for my projects, I just think it needs to be a bigger discussion about what kind of form you're making, if one at all. So like, when I get a change order, I've already got a form that has, it's submitted by the contractor, it's verified by the consultant, then it comes to me, and it's got the line items and everything on there. It would be cool if, like, maybe there's not two separate forms with two separate sets of signatures that approve the same change orders.
Correct.
So maybe like a little staff work session or something?
Sure.
To make sure whatever we're working for works for every type of project, every type of offense.
Do you want to put whatever you had in mind together, and then we have that as an example to look at, and then we can modify as needed?
And then a dollar threshold.
A dollar threshold?
Yeah, because a change order for $5 does not need to.
Right. Even if we have a.
What is that minimum now?
If we have a purchase order for $100 to buy oil filters, and it comes in at 1:05, we have to request a change order. That probably doesn't need, that's why I'm saying, let's make sure whatever we're making.
You know, dollar amount or percentage of the project?
Yeah, that was it, though. Generally, totally agree. That's why I couldn't say yes. This is a bigger conversation.
Sure.
Well, it's not, none of the things are one size fits all, you know, so you really have to kind of figure out what's.
But just in this 10 minutes, we've created an idea, and we can run with it, we just need to follow through with it and get it done and get people meeting so we can make this better. We don't have this problem again.
And I'll have to get creative.
You don't have to yell at us, chop us up.
Well, I think, I think the biggest hurdle we always have is communication.
Always has been.
And it is, you know, because dealing, even with the three of us, you know, it's a cold meeting, or you're not dealing with the three of us, so it gets a little bit more difficult to communicate, you know, as a group. But even just across the lines of all these different departments, so having, you know, a staff person that works for all departments, that's a good, I think that's a good bridge, you know, having the purchasing office handle that initially, and then working it back up to you, then I think it's a good plan.
Okay, so we've got a plan going forward to make sure that doesn't happen again. But going now, Ms. Amy, tell us step by step what you're going to do, what we can do.
You need a motion to rescind the change orders.
We need to rescind the change orders.
Okay.
Number one and number six.
Okay, we need a motion.
Have we had communication with those agencies done, so they know that this is?
No, not yet. I will say that they're planning to do the water main relocation Monday night.
Next Monday night.
Yes. Is this time to have this changed? We won't be invoicing any of that stuff for quite some time. So it depends on the comfortability we have with.
Yeah, but if we rescind the change orders, and that stops that contract, then I don't want them performing work until we have, you know, the budget amendment has been done and it's been reapproved, so we're going to have to delay that project. Unless you see any other.
I really don't see a way around it.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, no emergency funds, it's not an emergency. So.
Sorry. Some construction contracts have a clause in there for what's called field directives, and that is things where you don't have the time, at that time, to go through the process of change order, but your contractor needs to continue. You might see if they are willing to proceed with a field directive, because what that does is that the liability is then on the contractor, it's a chance they take knowing that the county will be essentially good for it, but at that time, there's no liability in the county. But you might see if there have been your contractors, a field directives clause that might save the water issue. Just recommended.
No, no, don't say that, don't do that, because we rely heavily on your expertise, because this is what you do on a day-to-day basis, we don't.
I hope they do. Because I don't like delays, that we don't, we've already got.
In the alternative, we can unencumber a certain amount of funds for work that hasn't been done, to free up some room in that budget. And I would be with all, I don't see what.
I understand.
Because some of the stuff is not going to happen for three more months.
I got you, sure.
We'll fill that out.
And fill?
Yeah.
Well, that being said, I appreciate your information, appreciate your willingness to help us navigate through this oversight, and we'll try our best, I will try my best not to, to trust my gut and not move forward again. But that being said, I would make a motion to rescind the two change orders from that meeting, and I don't have.
Or you can direct me to remove some of the unencumbered funds and the amount of the change orders until such times the budget is amended.
Makes sense.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I would rather do that.
I agree.
I don't want, I don't want to cause any issues with those two contractors, or delays, or.
Which is why, in that meeting when we talked, I asked, is this something that we got to do now because of the timeframe, or is this something we can wait? And he said, no, we need to get on it, and that's why we were like, oh, which is why we went forward, because of the timeframe being tight with getting.
So I modify my motion. Thank you.
Nice question.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, appreciate that. And then I think that would take, that takes care of the entire situation, okay?
Oh, I'll leave this.
All right, thank you very much.
So we, so hold on, you're going to leave a proposed budget amendment, and we need to make a motion to amend the budget?
Nope, not till that's laid out for 10 days.
Okay, so it needs to lay out for 10 days, and then we'll make a motion to amend.
You can prove or deny in 10 days.
It's on the table.
It's on your June 20th, General.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, Ms. Todd, do you have another item?
I do have another item. This is a review and hopefully approval of a minor amendment to the Christian County zoning regulations. We're looking at Article 47.5, which was adopted back in November of last year. Since that time, we took note of some specific details that did not really align with state statute, and wanted to catch those and make those changes. I provided each of you with a copy of the marked-up amended version. It's relatively small. If you had a chance, in Section 4 of 47.5, it dealt with part of the process for establishing a groundwater recharge protection area overlay district. In the text, we've lined out the portions that are to be removed, and in blue, you see the portions to be added. The revised version reads, seek a recommendation for approval of an amendment to the zoning regulations, adding the GRPA boundary as a new overlay district to be approved by the county commission. What's removed is a section which described mail notification to all parties. We also added an additional section, or item number five, which reads, as with any other amendment to the zoning regulations, the procedure for adopting a new GRPA shall follow the process delineated in Article 49, Sections 3 and 4, which are established and created under the authority of Sections 64 Doc. 211 through 64 Doc. 295 of the revised statutes of Missouri. So essentially, an overlay district is an amendment to the regulations, and when we review and approve them, we simply need to do that the same way we would with any other amendment. So this amendment simply corrects that aspect of Article 47.5. The P&amp;Z Commission reviewed these changes a few meetings back, and voted unanimously recommend approval, and they're now forwarding to you for your review and approval, and if you agree, we will go ahead and update the regulations with those changes. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Does this ordinance still kind of keep us mirrored with what the city of Ozark is doing for this zoning regulation?
It does.
I mean, we're not drastically different, we're pretty much mirrored to theirs for consistency.
We are. The actual final area we're talking about, we're going to review that at the next P&amp;Z meeting. It's been held up a little bit. I was trying to encourage Jeremy to come over and do the presentation on that, I have not been able to talk him into it, so I'm going to have to do it. So it's taken an extra month or two, but ultimately, yes, we'll be in the same place as them. We haven't had any activity in that area at all, so it really hasn't been an issue.
Okay. I just want to, you know, make sure that we're kind of mirrors, because a lot of the areas I know in the groundwater protection of concern fall out in the county, but the city has done a ton of work, city of Ozark. Does NICSa have an ordinance with regards to this?
They have not gotten into this yet.
Okay.
But the way we've drafted our regulation, it allows NICSa or any of the communities to bring that forward, and we can identify those areas and apply the higher standards, case by case.
Yeah, because the cartography is not just on the east side of the county, it's all over the county, and trying to protect our natural resources is a very important thing, and giving good guidelines in which developers, you know, cannot damage anything, you know? Because sometimes it's not seen for a while.
No.
And what brought this to life was Small and Cave several years back, when some construction projects that weren't taking precautionary measures had done some irreparable damage to that property, as well as others, so.
And it's those areas where you do have ongoing development, and there's a presence of, you know, identified sinkholes in the same place, which, quite honestly, I think NICSa probably has more than city of Ozark.
That's true, yeah.
So we'll look in the future to see how that proceeds and.
It's nice that we've gotten to this point, because if you go back in time, where there's a, there was a lot of development happening over on this side of the county, and we have an area on the south side of town called South Fork subdivision that has the South Fork sinkhole in it, and that's where the developer routed all of the stormwater, was into the sinkhole, which caused even more damage. You know, and it made it much larger. And so the developer, back then, according to ordinances, they had to develop green space when they put a subdivision in, so the sinkhole became the South Fork Park, and we started losing some playground equipment over there into the sinkhole. So now it's a, you know, but it all could have been avoided with something like this, had we only known 25 years ago, you know, good best practices with regards to recharge areas.
Well, the only thing we're removing from that is the certified, the 15-day certified letter, so it's not, it's.
That's the only thing being removed from it anyways.
Right. It's simply a procedural thing.
Correct. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if the city of Ozark had made any changes, that we reflect those, so it might be good to try to keep an eye on what the other municipalities are doing, so we mirror each other.
Yeah, we try to be as best we can.
Yeah.
Okay, any other communication questions? I just want to say, you know, it's taken some time to get this done, but I think this is extremely important, so we kind of see from the past what has happened, and in the future, we need to know and protect. So I appreciate you and Planning Zoning doing that. If the commissioners think of anything else before our next commission meeting, let me know, and we'll take that back to Planning Zoning before they go along, okay?
All right, I make a motion that we approve the changes to Article 47.5 of the Christian County zoning regulations.
Second motion. We've got a motion and a second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you very much.
So I've got an order for y'all to.
Okay, we can sign that, we can sign that. And then we will go to our rezoning.
But if they do, then.
Yeah.
Have you give it to me, is that what you're saying?
Does that make sense?
You can.
Uh-uh. Do we, do you sign that for Ms. Kim?
It's different than that. It's 95% the same, there's just a couple pictures I have in there, so I'll make sure I had it.
Yeah.
Make sure I wouldn't look at two separate things.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jackson, I know you generally make the motion when we go into close at the end of the meeting. Can we do a recess before we go into close to get documents signed? Because I'm not doing a session, I'm just, I'm out of your way.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, is there anybody out there?
Yeah, I got them, they're coming in.
I know, but I don't have a report. You leave completely.
Number five?
For Ms. Kim?
Because sure enough, I'd. And Ms. Kim, we got your sign.
I don't know if you need a copy of it.
Thank you.
All righty, we are, all righty, we are ready to go ahead and start our zoning case for today. Mr. Scott, do you want to go ahead and get it started?
Yes, our one and only case today is case number 2025-0088. The applicants here are Dale Russo, represented by Karen Trimble. The current zoning on the property is AR Agricultural Residence, and the request is for a C2 general commercial zoning. The next page shows. The next page shows the property highlighted in blue, kind of in the center of that picture there. The location is at 6795 Selmore Road, south of Ozark. You can kind of see the interchange of Double E and 65 just to the north there, so we're south of that even. Surrounding land uses here are Highway 65 and some commercial stuff to the west, a commercial log cabin wood shop to the north, some vacant land to the south, and residential uses to the west. The next page is just our zoning map. You can see the property currently zoned AR. To the south of it, that property is zoned AR. Across the highway is kind of a little mix of commercial and residential. To the north is commercial and then to the east is all residential and agricultural. The applicant here is proposing to change the zoning of about a 5.7 acre tract to C2 to be lawfully developed and utilized for a future primary use, which would be acceptable within that C2 district. The property being considered here does have a single-family residential structure in place that's been there since 1969, according to the assessor's information. That house is still there currently. There's also three billboards on the site facing Highway 65, as well as an accessory structure or two for that house that's there. The applicant did provide a letter of intent, which should have been included in your packets, stating the potential use of storage for emergency supplies for a nonprofit organization. I would just remind the commission that regardless of what their particular use is, if the rezoning is approved, our C2 zoning district does allow for any principal primary use in C1 or C2 to be done on that site.
With 30% remaining open.
Correct.
Yeah. The C2 district, which I'll talk about later, but the C2 district does have a 30% open space requirement. I'm going to mention that kind of in the stormwater section. So our future land use plan does have this tract marked as appropriate for dispersed residential and agricultural uses, but it is worth noting that commercial and industrial uses are typically seen as appropriate along highway corridors such as this area, but our future land use map does have it mapped as residential and agricultural. Compatibility with the area, again, we're adjacent to kind of a little bit of a mixed bag here. We've got a lot of residential in the area and we've also got some commercial. We've got the highway use and so we've kind of got a little bit of everything going on. Rezoning to commercial, you know, could be viewed and seen as kind of a step-down type zoning from the highway use as a more kind of intense use and then stepping down as you move away from the highway to more residential and agricultural uses. That's another very kind of common view in the planning world on zonings like that. As far as connectivity for the site goes, it does have direct drainage along a stretch of Selmore Road and it does have an existing access point for the residential house that's on site. Access to 65 is you can go either north or south from this property. If you move to the south, the approach there is only a ride-in, ride-out with 65 and if you go back to the north, you can get to the Double E interchange up there. Ultimately, any request for a future development, commercial development, we would need to see something from the road district and control of that for driveway access for any sort of commercial type use, since the one that's there is really not sufficient for that. It's a residential type drive.
And I don't believe, Ms. Beadles might be able to answer this, I don't believe that is a road district. It's not Selmore. It's the state, right? That section down there?
I cannot say for sure. So prior to the meeting, I advised Scott that it was Selmore because I knew north of there wasn't and then I knew they went south into the Stone Hollow subdivision. But some folks got up at the meeting and spoke and said that they had been asked to turn over some rightways to the state in that area, which made me believe that part was the state and there's other sections of Selmore that the state takes care of as well.
Yeah.
So the final determination, I'm not sure, but I do believe Selmore says it's the state's.
Well, there was an issue down there at one point in time and I had called that Selmore special over a barn that somebody wanted to tear down or something. Anyway, that's the advice I got was that it was the state portion of road down that far?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Building design and landscaping and buffering, there's nothing specific that's been provided for any particular project at this time, but that would all be reviewed by the planning department and the building inspections department if anything was to move forward on that site. Access, kind of as we mentioned, the parcel does have the existing residential drive on the north end of the property, but if anything commercial was to be built here, we would suspect the road district or state would expect a much improved drive there and we would want to see their sign off on that. Utility services in the area, there's no known public utilities here besides electricity. I know Ozark city limits does stretch down to that Double E interchange, but utilities for them are still way, way, way back to the north. Stormwater impacts, that's where the 30% open space thing I mentioned comes in, zoning it to that C2 requirement. We do require 30% open space on the site and it would also kick in our stormwater erosion control regulations for any future development. Not something we would look at at the time of rezoning, but something we would look at at the time of development to make sure they're not impacting their neighbors with their development and they're keeping that open space on the site. So just strictly the rezoning itself, we would not expect significant impact to stormwater at this time. Groundwater impacts, same thing. We wouldn't expect any impacts to them just strictly on the rezoning, but future development on the site could obviously add a well, septic, things like that, and that would be permitted through DNR, through the Christian County Health Department, all that good stuff. We do not have any mapped floodplains or sinkholes on this property. And then traffic impact, again, just strictly the rezoning, we would not expect traffic impact, but it is worth noting, the stretch of Selmore Road here is rather narrow and potentially rezoning this to commercial, we would expect to see some additional traffic due to, you know, development on the site in the future. So that's another thing that if development was to occur in the future, we would want to have communications with the road district or MoDOT once we got that sorted out later on what potential improvements they may require or want to see to that road. The next couple slides are just a couple of Google Earth images I took. This first one is looking south, showing the intersection where Selmore Road kind of splits off and goes south. So you can kind of see the log cabin wood building structure that's there currently operating right on the edge of that pavement. Their structure would be, or their site would be further south of that. And then the next picture is showing the south access where Garner Road comes up to Selmore and they meet. It's, we can't super see it from this, but you can kind of tell that drive down there to the left is a ride-in, ride-out only. And you can see the road coming over the hills, going back up to the north there. So at that May 27 meeting, and we did have quite a few residents and the applicant as well speak. The applicant spoke first. They spoke to the developer's intent to build storage for emergency supplies on the site and they stated that they would expect two to three trucks a week and believed it would be a relatively low-profile land use in the area. They did also go on to state the developer's intent to meet our regulations for stormwater control and make road improvements as required by the district or the state in this area. There were several residents that spoke at that meeting as well. Most of the comments from those residents were centered around narrowness and safety concerns along Selmore Road, in front of and more to the south of this property. Additional concerns were, you know, on top of additional traffic, but even getting larger trucks or semis potentially coming in and out would cause kind of even more of a potential issue there with vehicles meeting each other. And then they were also noted, the road floods on the north end of that and blocks that north entrance. When it rains heavier, we get a lot of water and there were several residents that noted And then a lot of the other concerns came down to nuisance-type concerns and just in general incompatibility issues with the sort of proposed zoning and the proposed uses and the current existing zonings and land uses in that area. And then finally, our office did receive two letters, which should have been also included in your packets, from residents of the area. Again, a lot of the concerns mirrored what was said at the meeting, safety concerns along that stretch of Selmore Road, the particular narrowness of that stretch of road, and the incompatibility of the existing surrounding uses and zonings with what was being requested or proposed here. So finally, at that May 27 hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear the facts of this case as well as the public input that was provided and they forwarded a unanimous recommendation of denial for this request to you all, particularly citing concerns over existing infrastructure deficiencies in this area. That's my bit. I can answer any questions or anything that you all have.
Okay. Comments or questions to Mr. Scott?
I think you answered everything.
Okay.
Can I have?
Thank you.
Does, do the petitioners that wanted to build this project, would you all like to say something?
Yes. Yeah. So Scott, can I get them these pictures? I don't know what we're talking about. Can you?
Yeah, I have a copy to go with the document.
Okay. I, yeah, it's mine. It's just an area of the road.
Yeah, what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Karen.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome.
There's a couple markings I don't have on here, but as you can see, there's commercial property right directly across from this and then there's commercial, which is Harland Log Cabin Company to the north of it. The house that they're talking about as being a residence here has been unoccupied for several years. It's locked up, boarded up. So there's really not any livable structures on this property. So it doesn't, I don't even know if that house would be livable at this point in time with the name.
It would be questionable.
Okay. So, but there are two accesses on this property. There's a state road drive access.
There's actually three on the property. One at the house, one midway down the property, and one at the end of the property where the state road is, that goes to 65, is blocked off.
Okay, so at the very south end of the property, there's a road that they had blocked off due to people coming down this road and parking. So it doesn't, it doesn't access onto 65. It stops there, but that's another state. Is it state or?
I don't know if that one is state or not. Selmore is state, but I think the in-road is. I'm not sure.
Okay. And Dane can verify that the state has acquired road rightaways on this road, so we kind of think that it's the state MoDOT road. I've got a call in to somebody at MoDOT, but he hasn't called me back yet. I'll last up with him and just try calling again. So the, the pond that floods up here floods when we have heavy rains, and so does the Telly River, and so does a lot of other roads, you know, that you can't cross through when we have heavy rains, but I think that pond or that problem she has there is due to a sinkhole, from what I gathered from, I talked with Jack Baker about this. Jack also told me that it was a state road, not Selmore. The, but Jack also told me it has a sinkhole on that corner there. So I pulled it up on the sinkhole map and I think that is a sinkhole. So I don't know if, you know, I don't know if that can be, they can be fixed, but they're very costly, so I don't think anybody there wants to take on that burden. So it's just something that everybody will have to deal with. But, you know, you have access off of Double E and then you can go south and then trucks can go down to Garner Road and end up back on 65 to head north, or if you're coming north on 65, you can get off on Garner Road and come up to this property. So the way I look at it is they can design their entrance to their property to where it's, trucks can come in at an angle and not have to, you know, make that right turn like you see them make at times to get in somewhere. So I think that can be eliminated, but with the, the driveways are the extra thing that I didn't know about when we had the meeting, the first meeting, so.
And speaking, when you spoke with the Planning and Zoning Board, what were their responses to these statements that you're making now in reference to the water?
Well, I didn't know about the driveway access at that meeting, so you're the first to hear about it.
Okay.
This is Dane, his father's property owner.
Okay.
And he just, when I showed you this map, then he told me about this driveway access, so we're just now hearing about it.
And Scott, when the Planning and Zoning Board cited concerns over existing infrastructure deficiencies, can you explain that a little bit more? I know it's kind of a broad description. I'm just curious if there was more detail to what the...
The, it was alluded to a lot in the public comments. I think particularly the concern here is the narrowness of that stretch of road.
For the diesel.
Especially if larger trucks and more commercial traffic starts using it. It is a very narrow stretch of road. It's not likely to be a road that, you know, if MoDOT owns it, they're going to put a lot of money in or really invest in. So it's something that either MoDOT, and with us, you know, we don't control it, whether it's Selmore or MoDOT.
Sure.
So if commercial development does go in here, it's going to be on those jurisdictions to force improvements on that stretch of road. If they come in and say, yeah, here's your driveway permit, you're fine, we may still, you know, have identified through neighbors or site inspections or whatever, some potential concerns here, but we don't have the ability or authority to address it other than what they have on site. So...
Well, and that's, that's one of the concerns that I have with, is the narrowness of the road. I know that a lot of times, you know, we have developments that have come into the City of Ozark and it's on a MoDOT highway and MoDOT says, okay, that's fine, you can, we'll ride off the project going there, you must make improvements to in-end, put in a turn lane, or Farmer's Branch, you know, where the church is, they had to bubble it out to put a turn lane in, you know, and that was a road that was plenty wide enough for a tractor trailer to go down, but it needed to have the safety access of having that left turn in to go to James River Assembly or even further up the road. I don't know if MoDOT has even looked at this, if they would, you know, have those same traffic concerns that what we're kind of predicting here, but I know that that could be a problem because I, it's been a long time since I've been down the road, but Ms. Beadles, you might be able to kind of guesstimate, you think it's definitely not a, to the design specifications of even a county newly constructed road.
I would estimate it's about 14 feet wide.
I was thinking maybe 16, but...
Yeah. It's difficult for...
I mean, it is old 65 highway.
You can't comfortably pass someone.
Yeah.
But it can happen, but it's not comfortable like here on the more northern part of Selmore Road.
Right, you're closer. I was out there measuring a couple different areas and it was 16 to 17 feet at the locations.
Still narrow even for normal vehicular traffic, comfortable, you know, I mean, we have a lot of farm trucks, big mirrors sticking out, you get a little cautious as you drive past people, but if you're bringing 18-wheelers in with pedestrians, that makes me a little nervous.
When I was out there Tuesday evening, I thought 22:07, there was a total of six vehicles that used that road. One of them was a milk carrier delivering a package, so nothing in by residential vehicles.
Yeah, that would, I mean, that would be...
And there is another access at Garner, 265.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, I think, I think that...
Yes, thank you.
I don't, I, I don't know, I, without reaching out to MoDOT and asking them...
Well, it's, it's...
I think there'd have to be more homework done, of the parties to get more information.
This is a particularly tricky situation, in that it's rezoning, right?
Sure.
So, can we even require someone to start...
Right.
Committing to road improvements for the rezoning? That's usually what happens next. It was just, like Scott had said, if this was something that the county was in control of, and you sitting on the board, I could say, "We won't issue a commercial driveway until, at the very least, we've done the study, right, like the traffic study, to see what can happen, and probably looking at auto turn, to see if trucks can swing in and swing out without disturbing the east side, stuff like that." But there wasn't anyone from, um, Selmore or the state at the meeting. And again, it's the zoning part, and what can you make people do?
Sure.
I just feel like we don't have all the answers to, you know what I'm saying?
It's just like when people, and the other ones, kind of like, "What are you gonna do about the storm waters?" And that's the next step.
Right.
But it's, the next steps are things that we're not necessarily involved with.
Exactly, and that's one of the, the changes for me, you know, with my background being over there, is the, the Board of Alderman would, would review that rezoning, but then the Board of Alderman would also then approve the plan as it came through, so we got to see it twice. Now here, we as the County Commission, we're gonna see the rezoning, but we're not reviewing anything after the zoning changes. That, that falls back, and that, that keeps us from that watchful eye that we're trying to have, because our, our regulations are different here at the county than they are at the municipality. I hate sending somebody down a road that they're gonna, they're gonna run into...
Right.
Whatever those issues are with safety concerns. Will they issue a commercial, will they, you know, force improvements? And if the zoning is changed here, and your application seems to be good, but you're gonna have these hurdles down the road, that you can't meet the hurdles, but we've already changed the zoning designation...
Then you're paying personal property on commercial property.
Yeah, and I will say, I, I don't want to speak for, I mean, Lynn was present at the first meeting. I don't know that the Board itself had major concerns about this being appropriate for commercial. I don't think, you know, with the commercial just to the north, outer road of 65, now I do know some of the residents had issues with that, because your residential, commercial never, is never good for folks that are doing property there. But for the most part, I think the big concern of the Board was the narrowness of the road, and the ability to navigate any kind of commercial vehicles.
And so you'd be in there, and you feel like it was something that just needed to be more homework, and maybe re-brought up before this moves forward?
I don't, I don't think, that's the thing, though, I don't know how much homework we can, it's the rezoning, right? So I think this really is just falling to, you know, fell to the Board on what we thought.
Sure.
It wasn't a very black and white, like, way to answer it. I think it falls to how you guys perceive the presentation by the applicants, and what they're trying to do.
And we feel that, I mean, we have to rely on the Planning and Zoning Board doing those recommendations, because that's what they're there for.
If you look at the drawing, you can see the, the fence line, even where the trees are along Selmore Road. The state has actually purchased inside that line, probably about 10 or 15 feet, so all that belongs to the state now. They bought that about 10, 10 or 12 years ago, too widened, Selmore Road. But I don't think they're going to widen it until there's a reason to widen it. If it's agriculture, they have no reason to arrive and to widen it. If it's commercial, they would have a reason to widen it. But they own the property with that in mind to widen it at some point.
So they, they own the property, or they have the right-of-way?
They purchased right-of-way.
Right-of-way, okay. So they don't own it, you own it, they just purchased right-of-way?
They, they own a good portion of that. The, the property line is actually inside that fence line now. So they purchased it...
Well, that's the case if it hadn't been the road of the state, not the county road.
But they, MoDOT doesn't typically purchase property.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
They, they acquire the easement, but he, he wouldn't have no rights within that easement. They couldn't build, or anyone couldn't build something.
I got you.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's still yours. You just can't do much with it. You let some cows graze on it, you know, or...
But if the easement were to dissolve, it would be yours.
Yeah.
But they, they purchased the rights to that property with the intent to widen it.
Yeah. And so I think that that's really what I'm looking at, is just to preface this comment with, we rely heavily, or at least I do, and I'm sure the other two commissioners as well, rely heavily on the sounding board that feeds us information, right? They dug through this case inside and out with the, I'm talking about the Planning and Zoning Commission, and looked at every single thing from the legal perspective with regards to zoning regulations, and then they render a decision back to us, and a lot of the times, the majority of the times, we, our decision mirrors their decision, or whatever project comes in front of us, because they, they've done a very vast, in-depth, non-emotional research of the project. They make decisions without emotions, it's just legal. I look at this, and I see C2 all the way around, and that makes sense to me, that that could and would be C2 as well, but I have the exact same concerns that they do with regards to the infrastructure piece of this. I just, I, I don't, I hate to put you in that position and go against the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then we run into a problem. So I am more inclined to follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then let's try to work through this process and get answers, and then come back with all of the data. MoDOT is, you know, MoDOT is aware that we want to put a commercial development in here. They have plans to widen, or, or grant the driveway entrances here, and then we go back through the process, and now all of those things are out of the way. And I'm sure Planning and Zoning, with all that out of the way, would say, "Okay, we agree, now, now it deems to be appropriate, infrastructure is taken care of, they forward a recommendation to us," and that puts my concerns at ease as well. But it does, I mean, looking at the, the aerial of the zoning districts around, nobody in a residential subdivision is gonna want a commercial development next to them. And that's where the term NIMBY comes from, you know, not my backyard. But you have growth and stuff that, I, I, it's, to me, it's the infrastructure piece of it, a 17-foot road with semi-tractor trailer trucks coming down, even if, at the point in time that you were there, there were only a handful, we don't have traffic counts to, to rely on how many cars actually travel up and down that roadway in a day's time, unless you guys have independently collected information together.
Just from living there, it's not very many. There's a few, you know, just during rush hour, people coming and going, but it's not a heavily traveled road. And the Hartland Lumber next door does have a semi-truck or two every week or two, and they come through into their yard, so. They park along the, they park on Selmore Road, waiting to get into the facility, so it's, yeah, so...
It eats up some space.
What's that?
I said, "It eats up some space if they park there on that."
Yeah, they're just long enough to get in, in there, and while they're waiting for them to open the gates so that they can get in, people pass them all the time, it's not a, doesn't block them to move at all.
I'm not old enough to know, but I'm assuming this is the old 65 highway, built to some state design standards. I know. You know roads better than I do, though.
When we first made there, it was, it was the two-lane 65, it was right there, and then...
So, what my point was, is it has some design standards built into the road, so some tractor-trailer traffic shouldn't necessarily just start destroying it the more and more that, you know, you're running trucks on it, like some of our older county roads that, you know, may have just had a two inches of base and some asphalt thrown on it 30, 40, 50 years ago, would start to deteriorate really quickly. I think that the base of this road is probably a lot better than what some roads could be, and could handle some of that traffic, but...
So, hey Scott, let me kind of jump in here. So, the reason why I voted against this project, and the reason why maybe the other six board members, I think we had seven that night, or six board members?
We had six that night.
Six, six. Okay, I think the reason why we voted against was the infrastructure situation. That, that's what I worry about in the county. In the county, since everything's growing out of the city limits everywhere, and moving out into the county, unfortunately, we don't have very good infrastructure out in the county, and, and so we have a lot of narrow roads. I think public safety is the number-one thing that we have to look at, and the other, but the problem I have is, I would love for these people to be able to, I, I think it's, it looks like it's a commercial area, because we have other commercial products, businesses out there, so I, so, you know, and I don't like to be, and I, I know the other commissioners too, I mean, we, we want people to, to be able to utilize their land, and, and not tell people what they need to do on their land unless it's gonna be something very, previously very harmful to other people. We don't want that. One of the problems I had, though, when I voted the other night, and I still have that problem today, is, and that's why I want to ask you a question in a minute, where we can table this, instead of voting no, if that would help these people, and then we look at it, because I think somebody like Beth Schaller, who's our representative engineer for, that lives down here and takes care of this area, if she would even know whether MoDOT has any type of plans, if they knew that we had a commercial warehouse coming in, because I think that's great. I, I just applaud you for wanting to build a business that's gonna help other people in emergencies. So I think it's a tremendous idea. The problem is, is I, I, if, if you decide not to keep your business and help other people with emergencies, and now you sell the property to somebody else, and instead of one or two or three trucks a week, you, we might have 10 or 15 a week, or something like that, then, and we still have the same infrastructure situation right now, it's gonna be more of a problem. So, and we, once we do this, we can't stop whatever else goes in there. And so that's a concern. It's a concern to us, it's a concern to all those homeowners. Mostly what I'm always concerned about, and, is that it's just, out in the county, if we can't get somebody else to help develop the road, then we're gonna have to always look back at the developer. You know, we had one not too long ago, where it's 40-acre, 40-acre tract, and it wanted to build homes, and, and, but it was a very narrow road, and you could have some emergency vehicles and things that, I could just see potential crashes, and every home's gonna have about three cars. Wife's car, husband's car, if they have one child, if they have two or three children, they could have five or six cars, and you start counting, multiplying those times of the homes, and then we start really thinking, "Man, we've really increased the traffic on this business." I think your business is not gonna create a lot more traffic, but if your business changes, your business model changes, we could increase a lot more traffic. I would like to know if MoDOT knew, you were gonna do a building that you're doing, I'd like to know if MoDOT has, would then put you on the list of trying to widen that road. And I don't even know if it's possible, but if they own 15 or 20 extra feet, that they've bought a right-of-way, just, just in case they wanted to, because Selmore is, is narrowing more in one place, that would make a difference maybe to us as, as we make a decision. Have we ever delayed a case before, and so, is there a negative for voting no, and then, and then if somebody wants to flip back around once they have more information, or something that happens that's positive, or would it be better for us just to say, "Okay, at this point, we're not gonna make a decision, but we're gonna wait and see if there's something else that we find information." Which would be better, Mr. Scott?
So, few pieces to digest there.
Okay.
But I'll make a couple points and try to answer your questions, as I can.
Because I, I just want to know, I want to learn.
Yeah. So I think the first thing to keep in mind, just because this particular applicant says they're gonna come in, and they're gonna put in some storage, and they're only gonna have two or three trucks a week, anything in C1 and anything in C2 is allowed. There's nothing stopping them from rezoning this and immediately selling it, there's nothing stopping them from rezoning this and immediately coming back and saying, "We're gonna put a bar there, we're gonna put a bank there with a drive-through, we're gonna put a restaurant there, we're gonna put a, we're gonna put more billboards there, we're gonna put a skating rink there, we're gonna put an event venue there." Any of that stuff would be an allowable use. So, this decision should not be based specifically on what this applicant is looking at doing, because we could have two trucks, we could have 50 trucks, we could have Walmart level of trucks. Walmart probably won't build there, but in our code, they could. Or a strip mall could go in there or something, which would obviously be a huge amount of traffic there. Yes, there's a lot of questions that we don't have an answer to yet. It's not our road, so there's some things out of our control with this. But I think another statement that I'll mirror to you all, that I made to Planning and Zoning Commission, is, would you ask this of any other applicant in a rezoning case?
I think there's always the tendency to want to get past the field of vision, right? And that, that goes back to what I was saying to Ms. Beedles a minute ago, with, that's where I'm, I'm, it's a difference of, of doing business for me, because we only see the rezoning here as a commission, we don't see anything after the fact. We tend to want to see past the fact, and, and we can't look past the fact. The cleanest thing for us, our reservation is the infrastructure. The infrastructure really needs to be addressed one way, shape, or form, and that, that's the, the applicant is gonna make upgrades to the existing infrastructure, and then rededicate it over to the entity that owns the road, or the owner of the road makes a public declaration of, "This is on our project list, and we're gonna do this," then the application comes back in front of us, and we have the assurance that the hesitation we're having is not based off the use, it's based off the infrastructure. Once the infrastructure is addressed, our reservation, my reservation, is put at ease, because commercial is around it. It's, and you're, you're exactly right, and that's what I had said earlier.
Yeah.
It's not a problem with your use, the problem is, you may get it approved and be like, "Ooh, I can't do this," or, "Oh, I can't do that." From a financial perspective, you sub a lot, and then we get, something else comes in, and it's not what we had envisioned with the, with the applicant. So to me, I think the only recourse that makes sense for everybody involved is denial based off the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then allow you guys to try to work with MoDOT, and, and I'm sure we can make phone calls to try to encourage that as well, as we have SimCog that does projects in our community, because this falls outside OTO's boundary, I believe.
Yes.
So it's in SimCog's boundaries, maybe we can, you know, encourage them, because we would love to have more commercial development in our county, that's good for all concerned. It's not necessarily good for the neighbors that's right across the street from it, but we don't make our decisions based off emotion, and what's good for the neighbor right across the street. We make our decision what's based on what's good for the entire community as a whole. I hate it, but I think what I, what I fear, and I've seen happen, and Ms. Tribble, you, you know this as a Realtor, you've seen this all, we, we allow a subdivision to come in, we allow another subdivision to come in, we allow another subdivision, and we never address the existing infrastructure, and the next thing you know, you've got thousands of cars traveling up Fremont Road, and it's still the same width road with no turn lanes, and it gets to be dangerous. So, I want to make sure that the infrastructure is in good condition to handle anything whatsoever, and once, once I have that assurance, I'm, I'm good. I think C2 is appropriate use here. But I have to mirror the... I think C2 is appropriate use here. But I have to mirror the, the group of professionals that we've assembled in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Their issues are the same as mine.
I agree completely. It's, it comes down to, you know, it's great to want to foresee the future, but we're voting on the restructure based on what it is, and that's what we have to do, and use the recommendations of Planning and Zoning as how we do it, so.
Mr. Scott?
Flynn, I think what the owners would like to do is probably table this if they can, and let us talk with MoDOT, get them out there, and see what we can get worked out with them, and a potential buyer if we can get back.
They would have to start, start the process.
Instead of starting the process all over again.
If I may, a couple of maybe points or suggestions. One, I don't necessarily disagree with what you, with your points. I would just caution, recommending they take their proposal to MoDOT turns this hearing from, is this zoning district appropriate here, given the situation, to, is their project appropriate here? And that's not the question being asked. So, we need to be very careful that we're not looking at their project, we're looking solely at, you know, if we get information from MoDOT, I think we need to be very careful that it's not project specific, it's, does MoDOT have future plans for this road? Do they have future improvement plans? Or, you know, what kind of traffic counts maybe would they need to see to require improvements here?
I think that's where it goes.
It needs to be very general, broad, because again, anything can be done in this once it's rezoned.
My point is, nothing to do with the use.
Yeah.
It's the infrastructure that we're dealing with. That's, that's my point.
It's cut and dried, or what it is, is it zoned where it is, how it is now.
Secondly, my take, if you intend to request more information from MoDOT, or whatever you feel you need to make a determination here, make that clear in your motion. And I would recommend remanding this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, to take that new information, mull it, decide on it, and send you a new recommendation. And then, they'll have had a chance to see anything new and review it, and then you all have a chance to look at that, plus their potentially different recommendation.
Sure, sure. I don't, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with the tabling of it. Remanding it back makes total sense, and we just need to pick, you know, and that, that could be determined at the applicant's timeframe, you know, so we're not setting a specific date. Tabling is a bad, normally stuff goes on the table, it dies, it just goes over and it dies. It needs to be rescheduled for something. So, that would be remaining it back to, once the applicant provides more information and requests a rehearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. If that would work for the applicant.
What about if you made it subject to?
I would not write it down.
The zoning would be changed subject to, MoDOT knows.
Because that still goes back to the concept of whether it is or isn't. And our job is to know that this is, the only thing we're currently voting on is this, this request to go to C2. We can't make it contingent to things. So, that's why it's like, we don't feel like we have enough, we can remand it, we can, it can go back for information for them. We're still going to take the recommendation from Planning and Zoning, which is why I need to go back to them, whether it's a restart, or whether it's remanded back to them, to give you time to speak to MoDOT, or whatever the Planning and Zoning would need, to give you time. Because it sounds like you don't have everything you would like to have in order. So, maybe sometime, maybe the ball got kicked down the road a little quicker than the information that came in.
We had trouble figuring out who owned the road. That was our first issue.
Right. Yeah. And I just assume it's something that, for whatever reason, Sellmore never got properly needed over then, maybe they didn't want it, maybe, maybe MoDOT wanted to keep it. Who knows? It could take years, or couldn't take years. It could take some time to figure out what years that transpired, and see what it was. Maybe, maybe Sellmore would like to have it, and MoDOT would like to give it away. Who knows? I doubt that they would like to take on any more roads. But they, they might. But I would, I would make a, a motion to remand this back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, at which time the applicant brings forward the information, it schedules the date, or their timeframe. That way, I mean, it could be, it could be a month, it could be three, just whatever, however long it takes you to feed back the information, to get rescheduled on the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda.
Yeah, we'll talk it right on.
I second that motion.
And so, make sure we understand that motion. So, we're going to remand it back to Planning and Zoning. Now, are they going to, and they're going to obviously need to talk to MoDOT. Do we need to, and they're going to want to know if, if MoDOT, based on putting a commercial business there, a warehouse there, they're going to want to know if there's any future plans for MoDOT to make that road better, because, like you said, we don't know, I don't know of any business that, I mean, most buildings change ownerships over time. No business stays in business forever. And so, we're going to, Planning and Zoning's going to have to decide, and then they bring it back here again, no matter what kind of business it is. And I'm really concerned about whether MoDOT can make some type of improvements, whether they would want to do that or not. But do we need to, is that, is that motion okay?
I think, I think so.
Okay, you're on, give it, okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, we have made a vote to remand it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and give you all time to work with MoDOT. I will help you contact Beth Schaller, or anybody else you want me to contact, and then it'll be up to you guys to talk to, talk to, and get information that can come back, and you'll work with Mr. Scott, and then get you back on the, the Planning and Zoning, okay? Can we go back there again?
I just want to say, I appreciate your consideration. And like you had mentioned, if you guys could check with your connections with the Highway Department, and, you know, let them know that it seems like a reasonable thing to do, that might help us pave the way to get that done, beyond just us requesting it. If you, you know, standing behind it as well, would be helpful.
I will call Ms., I will call Beth Schaller either this afternoon or tomorrow. I will give Ms. Karen the phone number for Beth Schaller, and she's the person I would start out with. Now, she may give you somebody else, and that's fine. But you're going to need to talk to, to MoDOT.
I called MoDOT, and, I have called MoDOT, and the person that answered the phone took me into somebody's voicemail. I can't remember his name, but he hasn't called me back yet. I just called him yesterday.
Okay. Well, they probably will. They're pretty good. But Beth Schaller is actually, and we work with Beth all the time. I worked with her for eight years as a state rep for this area. So, she knows, she knows this area, and she will talk to you and tell you what's going on. Yeah. And I feel better about that, because we're not against your project. So, it's the infrastructure problem. And so, this way, I think this is the best decision. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
You bet. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All righty. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
No.
That is all I have.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Over to that. We appreciate that. Okay. Do we?
Communications, I think, Mr. Scott.
Communications.
Communications. Oh, yeah, we got communications.
Did you bring your lunch?
I have lunch.
I'm going to have to use the restroom before going to the conference session after that.
Yeah.
Coffee got my balls flooded.
Please go ahead.
While you're digging through, while you're digging through. So,
I'm looking for a list.
The Senate Bill 190 update, the Collector, Mr. Nichols, has created a spreadsheet, or it's had a spreadsheet created. There's approximately 326, 346, over 300 names on the list of applicants that filed in '24, but have not yet refiled in '25. That spreadsheet has been emailed out to all three Commissioners. I've gotten through, I think, the first 51 names on the list yesterday and this morning, and will continue to go down the list. But it is an editable document, so that you can put notes in it of whether or not you made contact with the person, whether or not the person is the applicant. I, in my phone calls yesterday, I had three applicants that had moved, one that was deceased, and one that didn't care to go through the process. And then there's several others that were, thank you for the reminder, I'll be in tomorrow. Thank you for the reminder, I'll be in before the 14th. So, just putting those notes on there, that way the Collector can kind of look and see, and they can remove names from the list as needed. But it keeps us an accurate, an accurate count of where we're at. So, I would, I would suspect that, you know, we could get through the list probably by the end of business tomorrow, and that still gets everybody up.
I think so.
To, just, you know, need, need a little bit, a little bit free time and some help, and we can, we can probably burn through the extra 250 names that are on the list.
We can knock it out.
Yeah. And so, so, Commissioner Williams, I, just before the meeting started, we just kind of, Mr. Ted had told us, Ted Nichols had told us that you had started calling. And so, I, last night, I called 10 calls, I had made 10 calls. I wanted it to start at the bottom of the list, because I knew you started at the top of the list. And so that way, we're not making the same call. And so, I'm going to come up with, I'll make some more calls this afternoon. We'll complete my calls by tomorrow, or Saturday at the least. I don't mind making calls on Saturday. And, and I'll, and then Commissioner Williams will, will, will figure out the middle part, and that way, all three of us will have covered it.
And I'll update his, he's writing them down, I'll update his on the spreadsheet, so we don't double call.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give him my list, and he'll, he'll do the computer work for me. So, so I think we've got that done. I just want to point out, though, that as of yesterday, I don't know where my, my numbers went to, but yesterday, we had, I wish I had all that together. We've got, right now, it looks like that we're going to be, by the time the 15th gets here, that's on a weekend, but if they, I'm glad this is on YouTube. So, if someone mails it in, and it's postmarked the 15th, it doesn't matter whether it takes seven or 10 days, or whatever, if it gets to the Collector's office and is postdated the 15th, and it's been notarized, then it's, it's going to be included, okay? But it looks like to me, you've already experienced people who have moved, and some have died. I made a list the other night of just 12 people, it came up to 12 people that I know, that my wife and I know, they either had died, or they have moved out of that house. Okay? So, we're not going to have 100%. We're probably going to have between 97 and 99% somewhere in that number. But we're going to find out that most of the people that haven't signed up, some of them have forgotten. They're averaging about 20 a day. The last two days and last week, they've been averaging about 20 a day. If that's the case, and we have about 291 left, then as of yesterday, then we're going to get pretty close to 100%. We can't be 100%, or we got the numbers wrong somewhere. Because we know people have died and people have moved. And so, so, I think we're, I think we're doing okay. And we'll, we'll, we'll do that, okay? Some, just other things I wanted to make sure that, and I'm going to make sure this gets on our county website. I'll put it online, we'll share with those, our headliner. There's just some things going on next Monday night, I think it's next Monday night. I can't believe I don't know where this list is that I have before the meeting starts today. But we have, over at the Community Building, we have an electrical rate discussion. Liberty Utilities have wanted to raise utilities for all the Christian County customers. And so, we'll need to post that, and try to broadcast that out as much as we possibly. I don't know if citizens got that notice or not.
Every electrical user on the Empire Liberty system received a letter from the Public Service Commission.
Okay. Well, I hope they come. I mean, because I think it's important that they.
I believe that's the 11th at 6:00.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah. So, I think that's important. I want to make sure they know that. Also, you want to talk about library? We've got four applications.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, oh, I agree. Application period is closed as of Friday. Last week, there are four applicants that have applied, the incumbent and three others. And we will schedule interviews for this week, and we'll make our selection next Thursday at our regularly scheduled commission meeting.
Okay. So, next Thursday? Okay. So, we will put that on the agenda, to make sure that we got that deadline at noon on Monday. We'll make sure that's on our agenda. So, we will interview and make our selection on the same week, next week. The last thing is, is that.
Brad, did you say the week after?
Hold on, yeah. I'm going to pull that up, because I just, the, I think we discussed.
You said the week before.
We'll do interviews on the week of the 11th, Wednesday, the 11th of next week.
Week after.
And it would be, well, it should be Thursday, the 19th. Are we closed for June 10?
Yeah, we're closed on the 19th, but we are meeting on the 20th.
Okay. So, it'll be, we'll make our selection on Friday, the 20th.
Okay. All right. And then I'm going to have Ms. Carrie over at HR work with you, Commissioner Jackson, and she's got a copy of those applications too. So, we're going to call those four people and make our appointments, okay? The last thing I want to make sure is, is I gave you all, last week, we had a copy of the conditional use permit that the, that the Planning and Zoning Commission's going to be voting on this in June. When is our June Planning and Zoning meeting?
I almost said the wrong date.
And is it third, third Monday of the?
Yeah. So, June 16th at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be at 11:06, West Jackson, the Resource Management Building, just up the road.
And you don't need to be there, but what I'd like is the board members, if you have, you know, we talked about 1,800 square feet, might be too, too large. Some of you thought it might be too large. But I'd just like to have comments to represent the commission to come back to the, to the board. And we'll all be discussing it that night, and then voting on that. So, that's all I need to say about that.
I just had a couple of things. I want to reiterate on the Senate Bill 190, as we're calling everyone. But this may not be something we can sustain every year, being this, this is fairly new. If we end up, you know, next year with 2,000 people that didn't renew, we don't know. So, we're trying, because this is a new process, over the last two years, we're trying to really go over, we're to call everyone, do everything that we can. But we're trying to educate everybody in that, that this is something, you know, in the renewal process. Our Chadwick Town Hall meeting was very successful. We had around a dozen people down there, and that went really well. Other thing is, I'm hoping within the next two commission meetings, that we'll have all the boards updated, and then I'll be able to follow through with the process of getting that online, with the applications, as I build that part of it. But more importantly, getting all those, all those boards updated. And I'm hoping we'll have, have those on the commission meetings for the last few appointments that we have. So, that's all I have.
Very good. And last thing I'd say about the, I think, again, I want to pay a lot of praise to the Collector's Office, the Assessor's Office, the Clerk's Office, the Commission. Everyone's worked together to get this Senate Bill 190. And we've had a lot of positive comments. I mean, probably so many positive comments, and thankful for what we've done. And I hope it continues to save people money, seniors money. So, if, we're going to go into recess next, and how long a break do you want to take?
Five minutes.
Five-minute recess. Okay, we're going to recess for five minutes, and we're going to be back for a closed session.
Are you guys able to recess longer? I mean, they're going to have to cancel.
Because I'm either going to have to cancel my next meeting, or can we come back after?
You can recess as long as you like.
I know, but I want, don't know if they can come back.
I'm here, so I just, I'll just go upstairs. How long are we talking?